Good evening. Before tonight's board meeting, Mark Belton, a seventh grade student at R.K. Smith Middle School, will lead us in a moment of reflection. Mark is a member of the Men of Integrity at R.K. Smith and is on a media team at his church. Mark, thank you for joining us this evening. After the moment of reflection, board member Mr. Sonny Savoy will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. May we bow our heads and close our eyes. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our school board members tonight with wisdom as they make sound decisions that will affect the lives of future generations. Guide their hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness so that they can make sound and innovative decisions on behalf of the students and parents and employees of St. Charles Parish Public School Systems. I ask that you bless everyone that is in attendance as we strive to make St. Charles Parish Public Schools the best school system in the country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mark, before you leave, thank you so much for that inspiring us with your moment of reflection. Best wishes to you and all of your future endeavors. I call to honor this April 27, 2022, meeting of the Board for St. Charles Parish Public Schools to honor. For the record, all board members are in attendance. Also in attendance this evening is our superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, along with Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent, Mrs. Shelley Babino. Today is Administrative Professionals Day. Today, we recognize and celebrate our administrative professionals, Mrs. Babino being one of them, along with Mrs. Anissa Collystine and also Senior Secretary for the Public Information Department, Miss Stacy DeJean. So, you know, thank you for your service, and tonight we celebrate and recognize you. We begin tonight's meeting with, we have three resolutions and proclamations to get things started. The first item is a resolution in memory of Bridget Oub, and I would ask Mr. Jay Robisho to present that resolution.
It would be my honor, and this is a lot harder when it's a personal friend. Resolution in memory of Ms. Bridget Oub. Whereas Ms. Bridget Oub served as a teacher for 23 years, seven and a half of those years as a kindergarten teacher in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein express to the family of the late Ms. Bridget Oub its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the April 27, 2022 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Oub's family. I move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? At this time, Mr. Robisho and Dr. Ortling will present the resolution to the family That motion passes. The next item is item 2.02. It's a resolution in memory of Marcia Johnson, and I would ask Mr. Alexander to present that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor. Whereas Ms. Marcia Johnson served as a teacher for 42 years, 22 and a half of those years as a special education teacher in St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Ms. Marcia Johnson its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the April 27, 2022 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Johnson's family. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? That motion passes, and at this time, Dr. Ortling and Mr. Alexander will present the Item 2.03. Resolution in memory of Joycelyn Ballard, and I would ask Mr. Smith to present that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to honor Joycelyn Ballard with this resolution. Whereas Ms. Joycelyn Ballard served as a school bus operator for 10 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein express to the family of the late Ms. Joycelyn Ballard its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the April 27, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Ballard's family. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? That motion passes, and my understanding is the Ballard family is not in attendance this evening, so we have no one to present the resolution to, but we will make sure it gets to the family. The next item is item 2.04. 2022 National School Nurses Week Proclamation, and I would ask Mr. Nakian to present that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. It'd be my honor. National School Nurses Week Proclamation. Whereas students of the future, and by investing in them today, we're ensuring our world for tomorrow, and whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school, and whereas all students have a right to their physical and mental health needs safely met while in school setting, and whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school, and where our school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children, and where our school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care, and where our school nurses are vital members of school-based teams, and where our school nurses undertake the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day, and where our school nurses have served a critical role in improving healthcare and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years, and where as a turbulent medical crisis of the past two years has emphasized the essential roles school nurses play in student health and academic success. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, in conjunction with the National Association of School Nurses hereby proclaim May 6 through the 12th, 2022, as School Nurse Week in the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Mr. President, I move approval of this proclamation.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Dr. Ortling, I understand we have a number of nurses in attendance this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually going to ask Ms. Jerry Smith, Executive Director of Student Services, to come, please say a few words about our phenomenal nurses who have truly led the shield of St. Charles Parish Public Schools over the last two years in responding to and supporting all of our needs relative to the pandemic. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Good evening, board members and superintendent, and thank you for the special privilege of being able to say just a few words in recognition of our most dedicated and committed school nursing team. Each year, it is true an honor for me to recognize our school nurses. This evening, I'm especially honored for an opportunity to once again recognize them as our St. Charles Parish Public Schools First Responders. We have many nursing positions in their ranks this evening. They include our School Nurse Coordinator, our Specialty Services Nurse, School Nurses, School Nurse Paris, and some of our COVID nurse team members. These courageous St. Charles Parish First Responders have gone above and beyond to provide first-class care and support to our students and our staff. We celebrate and honor you for the significant contributions you make every day to improve the safety, health, and academic success of all students. School nurses were once seen as those who issue Band-Aids and ice packs. However, we have come to recognize that our school nurses play a vital role providing intensive care to our special need students while also maintaining the health and overall wellness of the overall school community. In addition to navigating the absolutely unimaginable challenges imposed by the recent pandemic, our school nurses, for example, have still completed so many of their other day-to-day duties. For example, this year alone, they have completed more than 8,000 hearing and vision screenings for our students, as well as providing our Satellite Center Health Career Exploration students a hands-on internship experience at the same time. Again, dear nursing team, we thank you for your heroic service and the tremendous nursing care that you provide to our students every day. At this time, as I call your name, I ask that you would come up for a group picture. Ms. Erwin, honor our School Nurse Coordinator. Melissa Byrd, our Specialty Services Nurse. Abby LaRouge. Anne Mertens. Chrissy Rockefeller. Gaynel Alexander. Jamie Byrd. Mary Beth Ritz. Melissa, well, I'm sorry, Patrice Harris. Rachel Dufresne. Charlotte Brooks. Tanya Street. Tony Scott. Virginia Bertrand. Latonya Pierre. Sheila Jones. And Linda Joseph.
That motion passes. Item 2.05. 2022 National Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation, and I ask Mrs. Melinda Bernard to present that proclamation.
It would be my honor, Mr. President. 2022 National Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas National Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 1949 to increase awareness of the importance of mental health and wellness, and whereas National Mental Health Awareness Month raises awareness of trauma and the impact it can have on the physical, emotional, and mental well-being of children, families, and communities, and whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14, and whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to our children's future, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause among young adults, and whereas school-based mental health professionals recognize that early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental health, illness, and recovery, and whereas public education can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of children and families affected by mental illness, and whereas school-based mental health professionals through their multi-tiered systems of support serve and support the social-emotional wellness needs of students. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, in conjunction with the National Alliance on Mental Illness hereby proclaim the month of May as National Mental Health Awareness Month in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and I move approval of this proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Dr. Ortling?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to invite Executive Director of Student Services, Ms. Jerry Smith, to come and say a few words about our outstanding mental health professionals that have now become an integral part of our services for our students and employees. Ms. Smith?
Thank you again, board members and Superintendent Ortling, and also, as I'm reading, you will get mental health awareness lanyards, and we ask that you would please consider wearing them during the month of May. Mental health professionals are woven into the very fabric of our society, although oftentimes they are unsung heroes. In the short time that our mental health professionals have been in the district, they have made major strides to infuse our schools with critical and vital social-emotional wellness supports and interventions for our students and our staff. Their clinical expertise has supported our district's vision to build a responsive school-based mental health program. This special team of clinicians have worked diligently assessing and providing interventions to our students who have been impacted by trauma and other adverse childhood experiences to ensure that all of our students reach their full academic, social, and emotional potentials. Tonight, we thank you for the social-emotional first aid that you have entirely administered during these most challenging times. As I call your name, please come forward for a photo. Gabriella Bork. Sherri Ward. And Tamika Jasmine.
That motion passes. We move into recognitions. Item 3.01.
We'll begin with students. Please come forward when your name is called. Honville High School student placed third for High Bar and Overall and second for Palma R.K. Smith Middle School students placed at the Regional Science Fair. Honville High School students were the top-rated students in the state for their respective categories at the Louisiana Thespian Festival. Honville High School students received superior ratings at the Louisiana State Thespian Festival and qualified for the national competition. School system students were named to the LMEA District Honor Band. School system students were named to an LMEA District Honor Choir. Estella Marillo. Estella Marilo. Bridget Stillman. Deja Williams. From Dusterhan High School, Monique Ellis. Christina Galette. Brianna Gilmore. Emily Mars. Gibson Wood. Is good some good son here? Okay, we'll move on to Ethel Scheffner Elementary School, Cecilia Buford. Trayvon Davis. Amelia Luquette. Madison Malave. Ryan Rodriguez. Cameron Sears II. Eleanor Zaffro. From Harrah Hurst Middle School, Jacob Bourgeois. Messiah Brown. Kenzie LeBlanc. Heidi Lovett. Cade Trish. Angelina Williams. From St. Rose Elementary School, Denise Franco. Honville High School students were named to the all-district basketball first team, Cameron Lumar. Niara Simmons. Honville High School students were named to the all-district basketball defensive team, Jai Johnson, who was also the most valuable player. Anne Niara Simmons. Honville High School students were named to the all-district soccer first team, Chad Bro. Corinne Caulfield, who was also named the Defensive Most Valuable Player. Mackenzie Dufrin. Ava Fontenot. Brendan Kenny. Ethan Mayer. Honville High School student is individual wrestling district champion, Javon Gray. We'll move on to employees. Honville High School employee was named the district soccer coach of the year, Edgar Edgar Fuentes. And coach, if you want to stay there, we'll move on to teams. And the Honville High School girls soccer team is district champion. Coach Fuentes. And any other soccer players in attendance, please come forward. And for teams, last but certainly not least, the Dusterhan High School Cheerleaders. The Dusterhan High School cheer team placed first in division and level, earning the title of state champion at the Southwestern Cheerleaders Association's Battle at the Capitol and placed fifth in the nation and was one of the only four teams to be awarded the NCA Go Be Great Award at the National Cheerleaders Association's High School Nationals. Joining us are coaches Marcy Scott, Melissa Boudreaux, and of course, our cheerleaders from Dusterhan. And we'll go ahead and take a look at the cheerleaders' season so far through a video.
On behalf of the board, congratulations to the students, employees, and teams that were recognized this evening. Tell you whether it's academics, athletics, or the arts, we are so proud to see our students and our employees take advantage of the available opportunities, make a commitment, achieve excellence, and be recognized for it. You not only bring recognition to you and your family, but you bring recognition to the district as well. So again, congratulations and keep striving to be excellent. At this time, we'll take a short recess and reconvene shortly to conduct the business portion of our meeting. Thank you. We're back in session to conduct the business portion of the meeting. First business item is item 4.01, expulsion appeal for student number one. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute, Section 17, Paragraph 416C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, April 25, 2022, at the request of student number one's mother to consider her request of the board to review the decision to expel student number one and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee. I move approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanction of student number one.
Oh, second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn II and by Mr. Nakken. Any discussion? We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn II and by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Okay, we have, we have one abstention. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes with one opposing vote and one abstention as Mr. Smith indicated the reason for abstaining. So that motion passes. Item 4.02 expulsion appeal for student number two. As per the Louisiana revised statute, section 17, paragraph 416C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designate. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, April 25th, 2022 at the request of student number two's mother to consider his request of the board to review the decision to expel student number two and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee. I move we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of student number two.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn II and by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. Items, item 4.03 expulsion appeal for student number three. As per the Louisiana revised statute, section 17, paragraph 416C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designate. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, April 25th, 2022 at the request of student number three's parents to consider their request of the board to review the decision to expel student number three and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee. I move to approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to modify the expulsion and sanction of student number three.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn II and by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I think we need to have some specificity as far as what the modification is going to be, don't we? Just the amount of time.
Correct. I believe the, the ad hoc committee approved a reduction of the the sanctions to one semester going to the rest of this school year and one semester for the next school year with an additional behavior contract in play for the remaining part of the school year, the 2022-23 school year, Mr. President.
So my understanding is a student would be allowed to return after the first of the year of, that would be 24.
Correct.
Twenty, 23, 23. After the first semester. Thank you. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. Next item is item 4.04 minutes from the March 14th, 2022 committee meetings, the March 16th, 2022 regular board meeting, the March 25th, 2022 board retreat and the April 11th, 2022 special board meeting. Move approval of all the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaux II and by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.05 proposal acceptance project management firm. The district has used the services of a firm to provide project management and grant management consultation following Hurricane Ida. These services were procured on an emergency basis and this contract expires on May 1, 2022. In order to procure the services of a firm after May 1, 2022, the school board authorized the issuance of a request for proposals, which was issued on February 3, 2022. The deadline for submitting proposals was March the 3rd, 2022. A committee was formed to evaluate and score the proposals. The top five scoring firms made presentations to the school board on April 11th, 2022 and answered the board's questions. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capitol Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April 25th, 2022 and is aligned with goals C and D of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we select CSRS to provide project management and grant management services on an ad needs basis, in particular allowing them to complete the, the work that they've begun for the Ida recovery as well as the other two hurricanes that they're kind of cleaning up. A further move that once this process, once this contract in a sense is complete, once the, once the Ida and other two hurricane projects are complete, that administration provide to the board a list of other firms that we can for future selection on a rotational basis for this, this type of project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian II and by Mr. Saboai. Any discussion?
Mr. President, to me, it sounded like there were two motions and that's, that's out of order.
If that's the case, I will draw the second motion and first motion to select CSRS to provide project management for the completion of the Ida damage and the other two hurricane projects that they're cleaning up.
Mrs. Bavanagh, did you, were you able to capture that? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not clear on.
Can you, can you remake your motion?
He made the motion.
Can you restate?
First motion he made was two motions.
Yeah, can you restate your motion?
Me?
Mr. Nakian.
Yes, my motion is to select CSRS to complete the project management and grant management services in relation or relative to the Ida damage and the other two hurricanes that they're working on. I'll move for my second.
Are they working on Gustav and Katrina? Are they doing any?
Mr. President, just for a point of clarification, we did, while we currently have, they are providing services to St. Charles Parish Public Schools, we did ask for their recommendations relative to two former claims, including Hurricane Katrina and Hurricane Gustav. They did provide us that information and at that point in time that those services for those two hurricanes is, is complete.
Okay. Mr. President, they, I guess maybe I'm seeking clarity here because we're, we're being asked to complete the services that they are providing for Ida and secondly, complete whatever services they were providing for two other hurricanes that took place prior to Ida. As I understand, the emergency contract that we entered into with CSRS, it called for them providing professional services as it related to Hurricane Ida. If we used their services to provide consultation or otherwise serve the board with respect to two hurricanes that occurred prior to Ida. We did not bring that back to the board for discussion and for consultation. Was there an additional fee involved in the work that was done for the two prior hurricanes? How, how was that managed when the terms of the original emergency was with respect to Ida?
My understand the balances that were due from Gustav and Katrina were going to wash out in the recovery of Ida. Isn't that correct, Dr. Woodman?
That's correct. I did inform the board that we were using their services. The contract is not specific from what I understand. I'll ask Mr. White or Mr. Rome to come to the, to the podium. What I understand is not specific to only Hurricane Ida is to retain their services based on an emergency basis because they were currently contracted under us for emergency project services. We did ask their recommendations relative to two former, two former hurricanes that we had worked with FEMA and several other entities to try to resolve. At that point in time, we did inform the board of that, that we would seek additional clarification.
Well, informing the board that we are going to seek their services to do this and having the board to modify the contract because as I understand it, the emergency, the reason we entered into an emergency contract with this particular firm was because of Hurricane Ida and the necessity of getting our schools back up and running as quickly as possible and making sure that we conform to all of the requirements that FEMA had with respect to our involvement with trying to get our schools back up and running. The contract and at no point in time during the discussions that I was privy to regarding the emergency services and, and otherwise we would have had to use either the bid process or use the request for proposal process to hire the firm, but we didn't because Ida was the emergency. So, so if that in fact was the case, then first of all, was there, was there an additional fee that we, that we wound up having to pay them for consultation regarding these other hurricanes that are, are emergencies that, that they were called to involve themselves? And the second part of that is if we are going to hire or give this firm, this firm was contracted on an emergency basis to provide emergency services in response to Hurricane Ida. Now we're saying that they, they have work to be done that still will carry them on until we, we have no specific date that, that, that we're going to end. The date that's stipulated in the contract at this time is May, May 1. So if we're going to go beyond that with them, we've already extended that contract once. We're now going beyond the whole issue of, of the emergency because it's no longer emergency, but I would like to know if, if there's more work to be done that we need to, need to carry them on to in perpetuity, then I, I just need to know specifically what work are we talking about? What, 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 what work remains to be done by this firm? And the reason I ask that question is because eye insurance carrier, eye insurance carrier came into the district and did an assessment of the damages that occurred in St. Charles Parish as a result of Hurricane Ida. The board and the staff accepted the results of the insurance company's assessment. The insurance company has paid the board nearly 25, 125 million dollars. I'm sorry, 25 million dollars. The board spent approximately 28 million dollars. So we're talking about approximately $3,000 more than we, we spent that we don't know whether that was covered by the insurance or whether it was not covered if, or whether if it was, then what remains to be done on the contract? You can't double dip. What's the, what is the dispute between the insurance company's evaluation and CSRS's evaluation? That they are still going to be going after? I, 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 I need to understand what work remains to be done and, and I need to, I need to be able to differentiate between the, 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 the insurance company's assessment and, and what they paid us for and what remains of that because we can't double dip. I, I don't and, and we only have, we only spent three, three billion dollars more than we've already gotten from the insurance company.
Well, my understanding and, and Dr. Ordland and Mr. Rome could speak to this, but my understanding is that this work is going to go on for up to a couple more years. And you, you mentioned figures 25 million, 28 million. My understanding is that the recovery is going to approximate 50 million dollars. And so we have got a long way to go. As you know, we just put some bids, some jobs out to bid. So there's still many, many projects as a result of the hurricane recovery that are going to take place.
I understand that, Mr. Sufferin, and as we discover additional work to be done, we still have to negotiate with our insurance company because whatever still remains to be done, we still have to file a claim. with our insurance company.
Our insurance company and also FEMA, and that's where this firm comes in is helping us negotiate with FEMA.
Well, what are we negotiating with FEMA for right now? That's what I'm trying to find out. What specifically are we negotiating with FEMA for that we have not gotten coverage from our insurance carrier on?
If I could, if I could ask Mr. Ronald White, uh, and Mr. Johnny Rome to, to come to the podium uh, to see clarification, just my understanding since the beginning, these services are important, will be paid by FEMA to a hundred percent based on the emergency, uh, that was underway. That's why we contracted with their services and the board approved their services at that time. We coincide, coincide with insurance to do their evaluations, like you mentioned, of Mr. Smith, as well as making sure that we have the appropriate documentation in order so that when we do file our PAs with FEMA, that all the information is, is accurate and correct and they provide us consultation services to better ensure that there is not, uh, a disparity between the documents that we present to FEMA and recover funds for. While insurance has certainly recovered, uh, the appropriate amount of, of funds, we're very pleased with based on the work of, of many people and, and many different entities. Uh, there's still quite a bit of money out there left to be recovered relative to this storm, including flood and/or property damage from our property insurance carriers. And I'd like Mr. White, our chief financial officer and Mr. Johnny Rome, our, um, our chiefs, um, plant service officer also to come up and, uh, fill in any of the missing parts that could provide some additional clarification. Mr. White?
Thank you very much. Good evening. We're pursuing recovery from, uh, along two parallel paths through insurance as well as through FEMA. And in order to get the FEMA reimbursements, we have to file all of our damages through the, uh, that grant program. At the same time, we're negotiating with the insurance companies for those recoveries. What we've received so far represents, uh, advances on the ultimate claim and the claims will have to be closed out, which could be another year or two. At the same time, the work that CSRS has been doing for us on the, I can speak only to the grant management side, is helping FEMA and Gosep to define the particular projects where there are damages that we would want to get reimbursed for and to accumulate the documentation and have those submitted. And what they've done so far has been working on the debris removal and, uh, as well as some of the mitigation expenses. So that's what they're doing. And when the time comes, if it looks like insurance will cover particularly the large projects, they will not need to be doing any work on those large projects. But for the projects that, and, and things such as debris removal, those types of work, for those things which insurance will not be covering, we would need to submit all the documentations to FEMA for those. I don't know if that is helped to clarify, but, but what we've received so far in insurance recovery is not specifically tied to the expenses we've incurred so far, but it's tied to the expenses that the insurance companies have already seen, uh, that we have sufficient damage for those. And while the insurance companies came in and did assessments, their assessments are for the purpose of, of defining the loss as far as they see it, but it requires work on our part as well, which is what Ms. Gray has been working on to be sure because of that adversarial nature of the, of the relationship, to be sure that our interests are protected as it relates to the insurance companies. As far as the, the work they've been doing for us for FEMA, it's, like I said, it's helping to define the projects for the FEMA grant and accumulate and submit the documentation for those reimbursements. And Mr. Rome can probably speak more to the project management side.
Thank you, Rome. Good evening. Uh, yes, on the project management side, for the most part, we have completed our services that I had to do with the bidding of the projects. Uh, we do have two projects that still need to be bid and will, uh, request their assistance, uh, during the design phase. That's the, uh, Hornville High School building C roof and then the Horn, and then the, um, Satellite Center main building roof. Those are two projects that we still have outstanding that we have not bid to date. We would request their services as, as we have for the other bid projects, but mostly on the project management side, their work is complete. It's more on the grant management side. So those two projects as well as continuing to assist us with the, um, Destrahan portable project and that lease, uh, process. So those are the main three that we're working on at this time.
From, from, from a, from a project management perspective, Mr. Rome, uh, the bidding of those, the Hornville project and so forth, uh, is that something that your people will, will be doing, putting together those specifications and, 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 and bid, bid, bid perspectives and so forth? Or is that something that, uh, CSR will be doing?
Yes, sir. It'd be a combination of both. I mean, once we select the architect for those two projects, obviously we work close with that professional design firm. But where CSRS or another firm of that nature would come in, would be assisting us in making sure that the documents are, are FEMA ready or FEMA compliant to assist if we need potential reimbursement. That's the services that they provide on the, uh, the current bid projects that we've already approved through the board. So it would be a joint effort, but, uh, CSRS or another firm of that nature's responsibility would make sure the documents are set for FEMA reimbursement.
Okay, it, it, it was said that the work that CSR is doing could go on for, uh, another two, three years. That's somebody said a, a, a minute ago. What you have stipulated is that what, what remains is completing the design and so forth of the high schools and, uh, some other submissions of what would you, what would you think would be, uh, we, we would, we would be in a position to wrap this Ida deal up or put the Ida project in a place where, uh, because actually we got to pick this up anyway, uh, but, 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 but where we could say this relationship that we have, uh, with the current provider, that, that, that it could end.
Yes, sir. On the design phase, it'd probably be six months to a year. It depends when we start the design and put the projects out for bid. That is on the project management side. On the grant management side, I cannot speak to because that's kind of the process of, for them working through with FEMA in terms of reimbursement. White, I don't know if you care to comment on that?
I'm afraid as we all know how, uh, I, I can't give you a good answer as far as how long it's going to take for FEMA to close out projects. As we know, that takes a long time. But I do know that we were able to hit the ground running and we were able to get a lot done early. And so it's a matter of as these projects move along and within the next few months, everything is defined. All the projects are properly defined with FEMA. Then I would expect that the services we would need would drop down to a minimal level. It's just a matter of the closeout process with FEMA and Gosep because at that point what they'll do is go through every single invoice and every single piece of paper and with a fine tooth comb and that pro, that process can be very time consuming and labor intensive. So I would expect whenever that, uh, part of the process would come about could be labor intensive, but I'm afraid I can't tell you when that is, but I'm thinking a year or two from now.
Mr. President, I have a comment and a question again. Uh, I think part of the confusion here and, and the concern is that this looks like an open end, a contract that's going to end on May 1st and we have no idea, uh, other than the motion that, uh, the chairman made, uh, to, to let CSRS handle the, uh, the project. We have no, we have no date for that start or ending and what the cost is going to be. So that's kind of what concerns me. I have no idea what the, the cost is going to be for them to fly those services that you're talking about. Whether we're going back to Gustav or we're going forward with Ida and, and, uh, tho, those issues that we have now with FEMA. So can someone explain that to me?
With respect to the, the Gustav and Katrina work, what they did was take what, uh, Gosep says we owe, which is about one point three million dollars. They took a look at it and as I understand it, it was fewer than 10 hours that they spent on that. And were able to take a look at it and analyze it for us and give us a recommendation as to if there was anything they could see there that was worth us pursuing. And we just felt like for that price, it was, uh, prudent for us to take one more look at it. Let them take a look at it, being experts in that field. And they gave that report to us. So that has been completed, that, that aspect of it. And it's just since they had the access to the, the FEMA grant and the Gosep, uh, portal for us working on Ida, they were able to take a quick look at the, uh, at those other two storms.
And I'd like to add, as part of their review, uh, in preparing for Hurricane Ida, uh, the potential return from FEMA would include, Gosep right now basically says that we owe them one point three million dollars. We have not made a payment on that. So any returns from the Hurricane Ida claim would have to come from after the review and oversight of the Hurricane Gustav and Hurricane Katrina, uh, hurricanes, which was why, one of the reasons why we felt it prudent at CSR since they were our current firm using for hurricaneic claims to also review that based on a potential return or non-return from FEMA.
I realize that, but, you know, uh, the contract is going to end on May 1st. We'll need another contract and act, and trying to find out what the fee is, you know, going forward, which we have not had any communication that I know of, uh, pursuant to that issue. What, what's going to cost us, uh, going forward? I mean, you're talking, the president said maybe two, three years?
Well, two years.
So we don't have, do we have a contract in place to do that?
For the purpose?
I don't think we do.
So, Mr. White, would you mind explaining, uh, first of all, the emergency contract that we're under now has a not to exceed limit clause in the contract? Uh, I, I can't recall offhand what that is. Uh, that's for the current services that they are providing through the emerg, this emergency period, which we expect to be, their services be, uh, renewed or, uh, paid cost by FEMA, we're hopeful from that standpoint. So what are them?
And just for clarity, for, um, relative to fees, my understanding is that the fees are covered. The fees for the project management firm are covered by FEMA. Is that correct?
To the extent that it does not exceed, I believe it's three or five percent of the amount that, uh, that we'd be recovering from, from FEMA. Yes. And they've, they've, uh, been very prudent about not spending time on the projects where we expect to be fully reimbursed by, uh, insurance so as to isolate their time on those projects where they think there actually will be a FEMA recovery. Uh, I think it's four hundred and fifty thousand is the not to exceed amount thus far, uh, which we have not reached. And the purpose of, of this item this evening is to select a firm that would be working for us after May 1st. So the current, uh, contract that was procured under the emergency process expires on May 1st.
Mr. White, given that there seemed to be a desire to, um, have FEMA complete whatever work that it is engaged in that relates to Hurricane Ida. The, the board could agree to stipulate that CSRS will continue to work on Hurricane Ida claims and receive whatever remuneration that would result from their involvement with Hurricane Ida. And then the board could from this point decide to, decide to select whatever company they want to select going forward to engage with the board on any future hurricanes or, or emergencies, let's put it that way, that, that would occur. And, and, and that would satisfy, or would that satisfy the notion that CSR could, 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 could have, uh, ha, ha, have, have claimed to Hurricane Ida, uh, commissions or whatever you want to call it, but they would have claimed to that. But, but, but if come this hurricane season, and we know that there are nineteen named storms, uh, expected already. So any, any hurricanes that come, come about, hurricanes, tornadoes, other kinds of emergencies, flooding or whatever, that what they are doing now would not be a part of any future relationship that we have with them. And it, it may be that, uh, the board may want to select some additional, or, or other companies to, to engage with future contracts.
Tonight's, uh, agenda item is solely to select a firm to continue with the Ida work. So I think the answer to your question, I would say is that, is that if a, if a, if the board wishes to hire another firm for another storm, there, there's nothing to prevent the board from doing that. What we're doing this evening is going through the, the procurement process in order to protect the possibility of getting FEMA reimbursement for the work they're doing on the Ida hurricane.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but that's not what I understand as it relates to the item before the board at this time. The, the, the item before the board at this time is to select a firm who would provide emergency services for the board after May 1 and it doesn't limit it to Hurricane Ida. This is, th, th, this, i, if, if a storm or flood or whatever occurred, uh, on, 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 on May 2nd, then that firm that, that would be awarded the, the, the contract or those firms would pick that up. And, and I guess maybe my question is, so, so, so I, I disagree with you that, I mean, I'm not on a CPA or anything, but I just agree with on interpretation of this. The, where we are, uh, a, as it relates to, and what I'm trying to get to as it relates to Hurricane Ida and the board's desire to want to allow them to complete all Hurricane Ida related work and receive whatever royalties they receive or would receive, uh, then, then they would be entitled to that. But any emergency going forward, any other firm that was awarded this contract would, 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 would pick up that emergency or those emergencies.
There, there's nothing to prevent the board from limiting their services to simply Ida. And the, the idea of having them onboard or any firm onboard for the next hurricane season is that we would be able to use them if we wanted to use them for the next hurricane and be able to hit the ground running after another storm. But there is nothing to prevent the board from limiting the selection of them or another firm to simply finishing up the Ida work and hiring a different firm or the same firm and contracting with them for a future storm.
I think we have a, a CSRS representative in the audience, Ms. Suzanne Satune. Do you have anything to, that you can?
I, I don't, I don't think that we need to get a CSR representative involved in this conversation. This is a forged decision.
She may be able to add some clarity. Is any objection from the? She may be able to add some clarity. Is any objection from the?
How FEMA looks at it?
Point of, point of order, point of order. The board has superintendent and staff. The board is discussing at this time, an item that we have. At this time, we have a motion and a second. And we do not need to have, and we are not, I believe that we are out of order to bring in a representative from the company to discuss this at this time.
Mr. President, can we have a clarification on what's the motion and the second on right now so we can make a decision?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was waiting to have the conversation. I'd like to amend my original motion based on information about the previous two hurricanes. Anything that CSRS did for the previous two hurricanes was done in a current contract. We're looking at something beyond that. So I'm going to withdraw that verbiage from that original motion. And I would like to make a motion that we select CSRS to provide project management and grant management services for the Ida storm on an as needed basis. Okay? And I'm saying specifically for the Ida storm. My intention is that anything beyond the Ida, Ida storm, as you're talking about, Mr. Smith, anything beyond that, we're free to go with any firm that we want to. But my intention is to see that CSRS completes this project in whole. I'm not committing them to anything beyond that.
That's, that's exactly what I thought you were attempting to do.
That's more, what my intention was on the motion.
And what I would like to do is, I'd like to offer, well, I'd like to offer a substitute motion, but Mr. Savoy was calling the president. So I will, before offering that substitute motion, that I think will take into account what you are trying to do. I'll let Mr. Savoy go ahead.
And one thing I want to mention before we go much further, just for clarity. I've heard this firm referred to by a couple of different names. For clarity purposes, it's CSRS Disaster Recovery Management. Is that correct? Mr. Savoy?
The motion should select a firm tonight. So I'm the second Mr. Knockan's motion.
The, the, the agenda item is proposal acceptance of project management firm. And that's for future work after May 1st. Any other motion is out of order. And I think that motion is out of order because if you, if you listen to that motion, I think it's out of order.
No, it's not out of order.
It's not, it's not pertaining to this agenda.
The, the, the motion is, he, he is not out of order. And any motion can be introduced during a, a discussion. And what I'd like to do at this time, if it's okay with Mr. President, is to offer a substitute motion to the motion that's on the floor. That substitute motion would be that the current firm that's providing emergency services for the board would, that, that the term expires on May 1. However, the board would continue to engage them to complete all Hurricane Ida related services and stipulate that those services be completed by December 31st of the current year. Further, that the board would enter into an agreement with the following firms to provide emergency services going forward. Those firms would include the minority firm Hammerman and Granger. Be provided a contract to provide services to all of our elementary schools. All of our middle schools would be awarded to CSR Disaster Recovery Management. And the central office and other auxiliary facilities, such as the maintenance facility and others, would be awarded to the female-owned group known as the Salsa Group. I believe that in doing that, the board would be taking into account its desire to be equitable and prudent in awarding of contracts.
Mr. Smith, if you don't mind, in your, in your motion, you mentioned elementary schools and middle schools. I did not hear high schools. Can you clarify that?
I said, I thought I said high school.
No.
Yep. I said their high, high schools would be awarded to the Salsa firm along with the central office and the auxiliary facilities. Thank you.
Purposes of discussion, I'll second the motion.
Were you able to capture that?
It's just, I'll give it to you to capture.
It originally got a second, but then he withdrew, he withdrew, he withdrew. And he made a different motion that didn't get a second.
It didn't.
It did not. The, the second motion, actually about the third or fourth motion that Mr. Knockan made, did not get a second because Mr. Smith offered a substitute motion.
When, when I submitted the amended motion?
And regardless, if it did, the substitute motion has precedent.
It does, exactly.
Nobody's arguing that. The amended motion is what we're going to act on first. Nobody's arguing that point. You have the language for the, for the motion? For the amended motion?
Mr. Smith's motion.
Okay. Okay. We're voting on the amended motion. And my understanding, just to paraphrase Mr. Smith's statement, Mr. Smith's motion, and you can, Smith, you can fill in the blanks. But my understanding is that the current contract with CSRS would end at the end of this calendar year, December 31st, 2022. And going forward, we would engage the three firms that you mentioned, Hammerman and Gaynor for the elementary schools, CSRS for the middle schools, and the Salsa Group for the central office and high schools. Did that, did that capture it to your sense? Sure. Yes. Okay, we, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. So my understanding of being in the insurance world for a long time, I appreciate Mr. Smith's, Mr. Smith's motion. And the only thing that I am confused about that I need a little clarification on from you is, so for instance, for an insurance claim, an insurance claim now, not the FEMA part, an insurance claim, it's, you, you really can't take out pieces and parts unless it's with the same, under the same umbrella. So on the FEMA piece, my understanding is it's worked as a whole from one storm, from one, one issue. Whether it's a tornado, fire, large fire, whatever, whatever the issue is. Can, can you break up locations and give them to a firm to go after FEMA money? I thought that would be covered under one umbrella. Does that make sense what I'm asking you? So, so if, if one storm-related activity or one emergency-related activity, we, with one firm, and then there's a second emergency and we give it to another firm, I understand how that works. I just don't understand the process of breaking up locations when you're talking about one, one covered, yes.
I think, I think, I think the question, and, and, and I think I need to explain that rather than Mr. White, because I mean, it's my motion. And in order for you to understand what I'm driving at with that motion. Well, because what you're doing in breaking this up, CSR is not, CSRS is not making a claim to FEMA on behalf of CSRS. CSRS is representing the St. Charles Parish School District. It does not matter how you configure your hurricane recovery process. You have, you have, you have 17 buildings in this district and each one of them have a different principal limit. It doesn't, your insurance company doesn't say, well, we can't cover that building because it's got a different principal limit. The entire school district is what we call decentralized. So you have a, this is how we operate in St. Charles Parish, in a decentralized environment. You have an assistant superintendent for the high schools. You have an assistant superintendent for the junior middle school and, and directors for the elementary school. So we decentralize everything. So there's no reason or rhyme why an insurance company would have a problem with how you configure your management process.
My concern with your proposal is the term limit of December 31st of this year. We already heard from Mr. White, who has experience in this area, that to be able to get our money back from FEMA in a timely manner is unlikely. It's possibly a year or two before we would receive our reimbursement for FEMA. So why would we cut CSR, CSRS off December the 31st if we have not recovered all of our FEMA money?
My, my stipulation in my motion was that CSR would be entitled to whatever remuneration that came to the board as a result of their involvement with Ida.
But you said you were terminating it at, at, at a date of December the 31st of this year was your comment.
My comment, my, the December 31st is that start wrapping up your business.
But that's easy. Yeah, that's depending upon FEMA, not upon them.
We asked them to wrap it up by May 1. Now we, now what I'm proposing here is that you extend it again. You're giving them till the end of the year.
Well, that, that's my concern.
That's what you're doing. But, but we can't keep going with this into imper perpetuity, which is, which is what, what, what I'm hearing here. We need to shut this down. And the only way we're going to shut this down is to put a stipulation on a date and mean that. Otherwise, we can drag this on and nobody has yet told me during any of our discussion, what work that remains to be done that will take us on into the next two or three years.
Mr. President, I'd like to call for a question on the motion.
Okay, there's a call for the question. Is everybody in favor of that? It requires a two-thirds majority vote?
Yes.
Two-thirds majority vote. If you could show by hand, maybe? Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Is it, is it available to? Okay. Does everybody understand what we're voting on or does that, the motion need to be read? Okay. Okay. And we are prepared to do an electronic vote. So go ahead and cash your vote at this time. And again, you can see in the, in the screen that exactly what you're voting on. That motion fails. Mr. Knockan, do you have any?
I don't have any further comment. Did you capture my amended motion? Okay, once again, my amended motion was to?
We're going back to the original motion that was amended, right?
Right. Select CSRS to provide project management and grant management service on an as needed basis. And I'm not sure if the board is going to allow me to put the stipulations here throughout the Ida recovery process. Okay, that would be my motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Knockan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I?
Yes, I want to know. That's not what we're here to hire to do tonight. We were here to hire a firm that was going to provide emergency services for the district, not specifically for Ida, but for whatever emergency would arise after May 1st. So we're not doing that with that motion. Is everybody clear?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. He, Dennis amended the motion to, to include, to provide some specificity as far as it being relative.
I'm trying to protect Mr. Smith's concern that we selecting a firm right now that we, that could sit there in perpetuity and pick up every storm that ever comes through.
That's not your motion.
It is my motion.
Your motion was specific for Hurricane Ida.
And once Hurricane Ida is done?
You did not say that, Mr. Knockan.
I did say that.
You did not, I did not hear that.
It's in the motion.
Repeat your motion.
Any further discussion?
I, I have more discussion. We stated earlier that CSRS, after they were hired to do emergency work pertaining to Hurricane Ida, they did some work on two other hurricanes. Did I hear that? Did I hear that? In addition to working, doing emergency work on Hurricane Ida, CSRS did some work on two previous hurricanes.
So for point of clarification, as referenced earlier, Ms. Alexander, as part of our Hurricane Ida work recovery and ensuring that the work that we were going to potentially be refunded for from, from FEMA and GOSEP, there's an outstanding and a short-term balance relative to GOSEP and FEMA. As part of their work, we did ask them to review those previous claims because part of our recovery process will be needed to determine how much we were due back from GOSEP and FEMA relative to the 1.3 million dollars that we basically owed to GOSEP at that point in time. So we did ask them to review that to make sure there were no additional things so that we could expect what amount from FEMA by the time these projects are completed through the services of CSRS as well as our own district personnel.
Mr. Superintendent, that sounds like it was not what they were hired to do.
I think, I think in there, I think in there. I think we originally hired them to provide emergency services and that's exactly what we did, they did. It wasn't specific for Ida. They just helped us out on other claims that we had just waiting in the wings.
They were hard, they were hard to help us with the Hurricane Ida recovery. But FEMA is not going to settle on the Hurricane Ida work until, until they recovered what we But FEMA is not going to settle on the Hurricane Ida work until, until they recovered what we owed them from going back to Gustav and Katrina. So the, the, the amount that the superintendent mentioned, one point three million, they're gonna, FEMA is gonna net that out against what they're gonna pay us on the Hurricane Ida recovery. So I think that was pretty much the extent of CSRS's involvement in Gustav and Katrina. To look at that and make sure the balance that we owed was valid.
I don't, I don't see that as being what they were hired for back in, I think it was September, when they were hired on an emergency basis to provide work in securing, working with our insurance as well as working with FEMA for Hurricane Ida. That emergency ended. I don't remember exactly, it might have been January of this year, that the emergency was over. At that point, the emergency contract should have ended. But we extended the contract till May first.
Okay, any, any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor. And a second. Um, let's cast our vote.
What we read was the motion, Mr. President. Yeah. Just a clarification.
It's going to come up on your screen to vote, so, uh, that way everybody can see it in writing rather than me verbalizing it, uh, you know. There it is. It's to select CSRS to provide project management and grant management services on an as-needed basis throughout the Hurricane Ida recovery process.
Waiting on me because you cut me off. Wasn't finished saying what I had to say. I don't believe we can hire any company for, forever. This board is not even going to be in office after December thirty first. So I think it's, I think it's wrong to, uh, to hire somebody with no, uh, definite in in determining the contract.
I apologize if I cut you off. I thought you were finished. Are you finished now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please cast your vote. That motion passes. The next item is item four point zero, zero six, Committee and Board Meeting Schedule for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Administration is requesting adoption of the schedule of committee and board meetings for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year in April to allow the schools adequate time in planning calendars. Expeditious adoption of the schedule of committee and board meetings will allow for the setting of advertising and bidding dates on new projects and additions to buildings being transacted in a timely fashion. Also, this will permit the development of school system calendars and will further our efforts of communicating board activities to the public. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the schedule of committee and board meetings for July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item four point zero seven, Request for Proposal Substitute Management System. The Human Resources Department manages the recruiting, hiring, and assigning of substitutes for all schools and sites in the district. With a substitute teacher shortage affecting the current fill rate, the Human Resources Department is seeking to outsource the substitute operations to a staffing agency who will recruit, select, and process the most qualified candidates. The staffing agency will also provide the comprehensive training required to ensure substitute teachers are classroom-ready. Authorization of the request for proposals will allow administration to seek out staffing agencies to staff substitutes for the district. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for proposals for a substitute management system.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item four point zero eight, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept personnel updates presented to the board on Monday night's committee meeting.
One second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I'd like to actually, uh, introduce, uh, two new principals, uh, at two of our elementary schools. Uh, our first at Luling Elementary School for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, Ms. Carol Bovee-Cott. And I also want to provide, uh, special recognition to her, Luling Elementary School administrative team, strong leaders, uh, as well, and a very strong team, uh, Ms. Jennifer Carter, Ms. Sam Bueller, and Ms. DeAndre Rainer. Thank you so much. And secondly, I'd like to introduce the new, uh, permanent principal at Mimosa Park Elementary, uh, Ms. Angie Butler. And, and I'd also, I would be remiss if I also didn't recognize Ms. Hayden as well, and she's part of their administrative team. Thank you so much for being here. And I don't, I'm not sure if the other principals in, in attendance and administrators are here to support them, but thank you all so much for staying and supporting, uh, some outstanding leaders. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Orlean. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes.
All right, ladies, good luck to you.
You have a point of, uh, okay.
Not, not point, but just, uh, the board ended in to consider discussion on item four point nine twelve during our Monday night, uh, meeting, uh, on, uh, consent these items.
Okay, uh.
They're all policy.
Four point zero nine through four point one one? Okay. Okay. So, um. So Mr. Smith has made a motion that we consent agenda items four point zero nine, four point one zero, and four point one one. Is any, any objection to Mr. Smith's motion to consent? We have a motion and a second. Uh, if we could just do a verbal, all in favor, now we're, we're, uh, moving to, uh, to consent. This is not on the act, on the three items. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, so now, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve all consent agenda items. A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Okuan. And we're going to do a voice vote on these, uh, three items. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, those motion, those, that motion carries. Thank you. Item four point one two, Proposal Acceptance, uh, Transportation School Bus Routing Software and Management System. In an effort to improve efficiencies and safety within the Transportation Department, the district sought proposals for tran, for a transportation school bus routing software and management system. The proposal opening was held on Friday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two for a new transportation school bus routing software and management system. Four proposals were received. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee meeting of the board on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan. Entertainer motion?
Move approval?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? I know this is something that the district is really excited about and we're looking forward to implementation. Hearing no other discussion, please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one three, Bid Acceptance, Janitorial Supplies. In order to have quality products at the best price, the distribution center sought bids for janitorial supplies. The bid opening was held on Monday, April fourth, two thousand twenty-two. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the, uh, janitorial supplies agenda.
I'll second, uh, that motion at approximately cost of five hundred fifty-three thousand, thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. The next item is item four point one four, Proposal Acceptance, Multi-Function Copiers and Printers and Service Agreement for the District. In an effort to update multifunctional copiers and printers across the district, proposals were sought for multifunctional copiers, printers, and service agreement. The proposal opening was held on Thursday, March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Three proposals were received. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the proposal from Conica Minota for full function, I'm, I'm sorry, for multi-function copy of print service agreement for the district at approximately cost of four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any, any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one five, Bid Acceptance, Child Nutrition Program Supplies. In order to have the best quality supplies for the child nutrition program at the most competitive price, the district sought bids from five vendors with three responding. The bid opening was held on Thursday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest bid submitted by Economical Janitorial for Child Nutrition Program Supplies at approximately cost of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one six, Bid Acceptance, Child Nutrition Program Bread and Bread Products. In order to have the best quality food at the most competitive price, the district sought bids for bread and bread products from three vendors with all three responding. The bid opening was held on Friday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the bid submitted by Flowers Baking Company of New Orleans and bread biz ain't for, uh, the bread and bread products for a cost of forty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Brings us to item four point one seven, Bid Acceptance, Child Nutrition Program Milk and Milk Products, Frozen Food Products, and Processed Food Products. In order to have the best quality food at the most competitive price, the district sought bids for bread and, uh, well, let's see, sought bids for food products. The bid opening was held on Friday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest bid submitted by New Dairy Opco LLC, formerly Gordons, for milk and milk products, S and W Wholesale Foods and Diamond Foods Distributor for frozen food products, and Cook Me Something Mister Diamond Food Distributors and S and W Wholesale Foods for processed food products at an approximate cost of one million, three hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one eight, Bid Acceptance, Small Cafeteria Equipment. In order to have well-equipped, efficient kitchens to prepare healthy school meals for students and staff, the district sought bids for small cafeteria equipment from seven vendors with one responding. The bid opening was held on Thursday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and is aligned with goal C of the board's. on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest bid for small cafeteria equipment as recommended for a cost of approximately ten thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item four point one nine Bid Acceptance Large Kitchen Equipment. In order to have well-equipped, efficient kitchens to prepare healthy school meals for its students and staff, the district sought bids for large kitchen equipment from seven vendors with three responding. The bid opening was held on Thursday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest bid for large kitchen equipment as recommended at approximately cost of two hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, second, and by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. And the twentieth and final business item of the evening is item four point two zero Accounts Payable for the Month of March, two thousand twenty-two. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve accounts payable for the month of March, two thousand and twenty-two, for a total cost of six million, one hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. We now move into closing items. Item five point zero one Standing Committee Reports. The Chair of any standing committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, the Transportation Committee met this past Monday, April twenty-fifth. There was only one item on the agenda, and it dealt with school bus routing software and management system. That was, uh, that item was also on tonight's agenda and was approved. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Mr. President, Capitol Approvements Committee met Monday, and we took two items. First item was committed, committee meeting only, and Mr. Rome and Mr. Cave made a presentation on, uh, major capital, uh, construction projects, uh, and which also included our safety projects that were, um, approved for, to move forward. Some of those projects are tied into the bond issue. The second item that was brought to the committee meeting was the acceptance, I mean, was a discussion for project management firm, which was discussed and approved tonight, approving CSRS to complete the item project, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakian.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, um, April the twenty-fifth. We had six items on our agenda, all for committee meeting only. They were briefly presented to us, uh, but we certainly are available for further questions if there are any. Uh, it was textbook adoption, specifically AP Psychology, Psychology, AP Human Geography, AP World History, Physics, and General Music. Again, that was for committee meeting only, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. It may have been briefly, but textbook adoption is very important. So thank you for that report, Mrs. Bernard.
Mr. President, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee met on Monday night, and we received a monthly legal update uh, from our risk manager and also our attorney, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Okuan.
Mr. President, Policy and Personnel Committee met Monday night, discussed items, the committee's meeting sched- the Board's committee, uh, meeting scheduling, Board meeting schedule, request for proposals for substitute management system. Personnel items revision to policy five point zero five, uh, policy five point eight nine, and policy one point zero three for revisions. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Savoie.
Mr. President, the Legislative Committee met on last Monday night, and, uh, the Board reviewed a number of pieces of legislation that's before the Louisiana legislature at this time. Uh, the, we also want to thank Representative Miller and Senator Smith for meeting with the Board Committee, which included the Superintendent, Board President, and myself, and, uh, Steve Covetta. Uh, we thank them for taking time from their business schedule to meet with us and review our concerns regarding, uh, various pieces of legislation and to pledge their support of pieces of legislation that may have a detrimental effect to the operation of our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, April twenty-fifth, and we covered eight items. All eight of those items came to the full Board during this meeting and were approved. And, uh, so at this time, we move to item five point zero two, which is the Superintendent's report. Dr. Orlean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hamba High School's graduation will be held on Wednesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Destrian High School's graduation will be held on Thursday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Both ceremonies will be held at the Ponchatrain Center for six P M. In the past, just for the Board's note, one with seven and one with six, both will be at six P M this year. Ring Nights. Hamba High School's Ring Night Ceremony will be held at Hamba High School on Monday, May second, at six P M. Destrian High School's Ring Night Ceremony will be held at Destrian High School on Wednesday, May fourth, at six P M. Each spring, the Louisiana Department of Education administers assessments known as LEAP twenty twenty-five in grades three through eight. Students in grades three through eight will take computer-based LEAP twenty twenty-five assessments. The LEAP twenty twenty-five will be administered beginning May eleventh through May twentieth. Schools will send their testing schedules as the testing dates draw near. High school students enrolled in LEAP courses will take these assessments, May sixteenth through May eighteenth. All high school students not taking LEAP assessments will participate in asynchronous learning on these days. More information will be communicated by the high schools. All e-learning students in grades three through eight and high school students taking LEAP courses are required to participate in the LEAP test at their schools. Your child's school will contact you soon about their testing schedule and expectations. Please contact your child's school for further information relevant to LEAP twenty twenty-five assessments and schedules. As of today, due to Hurricane Ida, we have incurred a total of twenty-seven million, six hundred ninety-five thousand and seventy-nine dollars in recovery expenses. We are projecting future costs to be approximately nineteen million dollars, including fourteen point nine million for large construction projects, as well as one point nine million for smaller ones. We have received twenty-four million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand and forty-nine dollars in insurance payments thus far. This Saturday, April thirtieth, our debt service bond issue will be on the election ballot. The passage of this bond issue will allow St. Charles Parish Public Schools to complete much-needed renovations and additions at several school sites and centers. It'll allow us to improve and upgrade technology infrastructure and equipment, install additional security cameras while upgrading existing cameras, and enhance and expand career and technical education opportunities at our high schools and satellite center. In order for our students to be future-ready and prepared for an ever-changing workforce and world, we must provide them with optimal learning opportunities and environments and resources. With an emphasis on career and technical education, early childhood, and STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, campuses are in need of updates to accommodate current learning methods. By approval of this bond issue, the school system can make these necessary renovations and expansions without an increase in taxes to create more functional, modern, and adaptable spaces to serve students and our community. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Orlean.
Move adjourn.
Before we adjourn, um, Mr. President, the action we, the Board took tonight uh, with respect to CSRS, uh, simply limited the work that CSRS is doing to Hurricane Ida. That still does not put us in a position where we have, uh, any, any, any firm selected to provide services going beyond Hurricane Ida. So I'm going to request that Superintendent put that item on the agenda so we can take that up because we're going to be moving into, to hurricane season, uh, very soon. And as we, as we know, there are nineteen named storms, uh, predicted already not to take into account, uh, the frequency of, uh, tornadoes and flooding and so forth. So we'll, we need to take that up and put that piece to rest.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
And there is a hurricane named Nicole, and if anybody knows my daughter, I'm scared of that hurricane.
Move adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.